Good evening. The September 7th, 2021 Legislative Meeting of the Anarundel County Council is now in session. Please silence all electronic devices at this time. Once again, welcome back to our chambers. Please note that masks must be worn in all county buildings, including this chambers. You must wear your mask at all times. If you need a sip of water, I'll certainly understand, but I will have to be the mask police this evening. For the record, please, to my colleagues, continue to introduce yourselves when speaking, as we've been doing, and also please remember to say your name when making a motion or offering a second. At this time, Mr. Pruski will lead us in the invocation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If anyone could stand, please. I'd like to first recognize for those that celebrate Rosh Hashanah and upcoming Yom Kippur, wish you a happy and healthy and safe holiday. I do ask that everyone just bow their heads for this statement. As we gather here tonight as members of the Anarundel County Council, we are ever mindful of the opportunities to render our service to fellow citizens and to our community. Keep in mind always the enduring values of public service, exerting our efforts in those areas and those things upon which future generations can build with confidence. Let us continue to strive to make a better world for those that come behind us. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Pruski. And now, Ms. Hare, I believe you have some special guests to introduce for the pledge.
Yes, could Cory please come up here, please? Cory is with the Boy Scouts in District 7 in Crofton. He's working on his civics badge, so he's going to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance today. Whenever you're ready, Cory.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that, under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under forms and publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4413.
Thank you. We will now open our invitation to audience. Madam Secretary, do we have any comments or communications on any subject not included in the printed agenda received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. We did not receive any online submissions of general testimony.
Okay. We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. When I call your name, please come forward to the table. Linda Davis, Russell Smith, Brent Glosser, and Jennifer Sell. Ms. Davis, I noticed you're signed up twice, but I think you are, you're on behalf of two separate organizations, then please be sure you state your organization for your comments. Okay, Ms. Davis, you're first, and go ahead.
Okay. My name is Linda Davis. My address is 215 Cornet Drive, Lympicum, Maryland. I'm with Showing Up for Racial Justice, which is my first comments. I would like to state my displeasure with the police trial board's decision not to fire Officer Daniel Reynolds for his use of excessive force. To me, this shows that the police cannot police themselves and that there is a need for a community-controlled and operated entity that is external to the police department or state-imposed processes that has the power to investigate, adjudicate, and impose discipline. In a statement on the passage of statewide police reform legislation during the 2020 legislative session, the Maryland Coalition for Justice and Police Accountability stated that the new bill, quote, "has aspects of civilian participation in a disciplinary process. This is not the same as community oversight." Further, the General Assembly restored one of the most problematic aspects of the LEOBR, Trial Boards, which have the final say on police discipline. Police chiefs still cannot be held accountable for officers going unpunished for their egregious behavior, unquote. The failure to fire Daniel Reynolds is a case in point. The county council will be integral in appointing police accountability board members. Police accountability boards must be granted the power and authority to impose disciplinary actions. The county council must take power back from the chief and county executive either legislatively or through the Charter Review Commission. Also pursuant to a general order from the police, the county chief can overrule a police trial board, but the rules for doing that are established by the chief, and they should be established by the police accountability board and ratified by the county council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Ms. Schenck? Russell Smith? Brent Glosser?
Yes, good evening, council members. I'm here before you this evening to urge you to pass a permanent solution which would safeguard lessors from outrageous lease renewal increases in Anarundel County. Leaseholders other than, thank you, leaseholders other than the temporary ordinance of AA Bill 46-20 are subject to the market rate renewals and have no other protections. Many Anarundel residents and other leaseholders across the state are faced with similar situations and often forced to move or find other housing. To put it into perspective, I have been at my current address for two years. In June of this year, I received a lease renewal of 22%, which equated to roughly $402 of an increase. My current rent is $1,750, and I also pay an additional $50 for reserved parking. The renewal for a 12-month lease is $2,148. I contacted Councilmember Lisa, and forgive me for the last name pronunciation, is it Rodvien?
Rodvien.
Thank you. And regarding this matter, and she provided me with information on AA County Bill 4620. And as you know, this bill is in effect until November. Thank you very much for your correspondence. I provided this information to my resident manager of LMC, who also owns several other properties here in Annapolis and others throughout Anarundel County. LMC is a large property management organization, and initially stated that this bill had not passed, as they were misinformed by their attorney. After providing this information to them, my lease renewal was adjusted to the cap of 3% and well within the current guidelines. I provided this information to other residents in my building who had received similar lease renewal offers, and since then, all leases have been adjusted within the current guidelines. My concern is for lease renewals in 2022 that would not be protected under the current moratorium. So I plead to you to act and create a more permanent solution that would protect residents of Anarundel County on a year-to-year basis. And my hope is that lease renewals will be capped at no more than 3% or in that general area on a year-to-year rental basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glosser.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Sell?
Madam Chair, I apologize, I have my flag up. I know you couldn't see me.
Sorry.
Can I ask him a question, if you don't mind?
Sure, go ahead.
Could you name the company again, sir? I couldn't.
LMC.
LMC, okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Madam. You're welcome.
Ms. Sell, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Sell. I live at 444 Linwood Drive in Severna Park. I'm here today to express my concern and disappointment at the police board's decision not to fire Officer Daniel Reynolds for his completely unprofessional and, most importantly, life-threatening behavior. Although in this case, the victim, Daniel Daryl's, was not murdered by the police, the actions Officer Reynolds took were unnecessary and threatened the life of the victim. By deciding to retain the employment of Officer Reynolds, the trial board and police department are sending a message, they will not hold our police accountable, and our Black and Brown citizen's safety is not a priority for them. If our police department truly cared to protect the people of this county, they would remove violent offenders from their ranks and hold our officers accountable. However, when given the opportunity, they chose not to do this, and that speaks louder than any mission statement ever will. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sell. Ms. Davis?
My name is Linda Davis. My address is 215 Cornet Drive, Lympicum. I'm speaking personally here. I would like to discuss critical race theory, especially in the light of the fact that Councilmember from District 3 is participating in a panel discussion on September 15th regarding critical race theory. I would like to know if this panel discussion and the county council will be discussing and addressing the following. Why is Anarundel County one of the four counties in Maryland that made up 80% of all the hate-bias reports in 2019? Why did Anarundel County have the most hate or bias accounts of any jurisdiction in Maryland in 2018? I would argue that one answer to these questions is our reluctance to teach and learn the truth about our history. I grew up in Pasadena, Maryland, and went to public schools. I did not learn about the history that occurred in my own backyard, including the lynching of George Briscoe in 1884. I would like the county council to draft a resolution that states our children deserve to be provided with honest, up-to-date education. Our children should be equipped to solve our nation's problems by examining and learning from our mistakes rather than repeating them. Our teachers should teach the truth about our history, including the facets of this country's history that have been erased, such as the five known extradition lynchings that took place right here in Anarundel County. Our teachers should find age-appropriate ways to tell hard truths about our country's past and present. Our teachers should provide students with the education they deserve, including one that acknowledges pressing real-world problems like police violence, and equip students with the practical skills and conceptual tools needed to address them. Our schools should have the resources to meet every child's needs, including well-trained and supportive teachers, and a curriculum that helps them reckon with our nation's past and reshape our nation's future. If we support our teachers and students in trying to grapple with truth rather than hide the truth, we can finally stop repeating the past, and we can make Anarundel County truly the best place for all, free of hate and bias, and with justice and liberty for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. The panel, you're dismissed. I do have one more sign-up, Stephen Waddy. I don't think I see Mr. Waddy in the audience. At this time, if there's anyone else who wishes to speak, please come up to the table for the invitation to audience. Seeing none, the invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda?
Madam Chair, first, I would like to be added as a sponsor to Resolution 4321. And then, I would like to take a moment of personal privilege. Exactly one week ago today, a U.S. Navy helicopter crashed in California, killing five onboard, including Hospital corpsman II-class Sarah Burns, who is from Severna Park. I just want to take a moment to express my sincere condolences to the family and friends of Ms. Burns, especially her husband, Lucas. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fiedler. Does anyone else have, Ms. Rodvien?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to also take a moment of personal privilege to express gratitude, but also support for the residents of Anarundel County. And obviously, my district, District 6, and the city of Annapolis were hit very hard by the tornado that tore through South County, parts of South County and the city of Annapolis, including my own neighborhood. But I also want to express gratitude that no one was killed, there were no serious injuries, and there has been an outpouring of support from all parts of the county and to help with cleanup and to make sure that people have the resources that they need to get back to their lives as quickly as possible, and make sure that folks also know that there is a town hall for folks that need support this Wednesday at Mount Olive Church in parole.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. I will just share in Councilwoman Rodvien's sentiments, I've actually been really amazed at the level of community effort that's come out for all of the neighborhoods that were hit hard. It's been, I mean, it's a tragic situation, but it has been wonderful to watch the community efforts that came out of that. And I would also like to be added as a cosponsor to Resolution 4321.
Anyone to my left side? I'm not ignoring you, promise. Ms. Pickard?
I'd like to be added to Resolution 43 as well.
I have a note, as Chair, to let everyone know that, as you know in the audience, we lost our District 1 Board of Education member, Candace Antwine, back in mid-July, and it is this council's job, under state law, to appoint a replacement for her seat. We have, we solicited applications over the month of August. We closed the application period on September 1st. We have four applicants, and you can review their materials on the county council website. Feel free to get in touch with your council member if you have any specific questions that you would like your council member to ask of any of the applicants. Our current plan is to interview the applicants on September 13th. We are still working on the specific date and location, and any updates will be posted timely on our website. And with that, may I have a motion that any partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole.
Councilman Pruski, so moved.
Is there a second?
Allison Pickard, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of July 19th and 29th, 2021.
Minutes of legislative session 2021, Legislative Day Number 16. The meeting was called to order by Chair Lacy at 7:00 p.m. and opened with the invocation, and the Pledge of Allegiance was given by Mr. Volkey. Minutes of special virtual meeting 2021. The meeting was called to order by Chair Sarah Lacy at 6:00 p.m. The meeting was held remotely via Zoom webinar, beginning with a roll call of all present.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of July 19th and 29th, 2021?
So moved. Allison Pickard, second.
Hare, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. The minutes of July 19th and 29th, 2021, stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 7221, An Ordinance Concerning Purchasing Capital Improvement Contracts, Prevailing Wage, and Local Hiring. Bill Number 7321, An Ordinance Concerning Approval of Lease Agreement for Copper Mine Tennis Facility. Bill Number 7421, An Ordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development/Site Development Exemptions. Bill Number 7521, An Ordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development/Community Meetings Exemption for In-Kind Replacements. Bill Number 7621, An Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget: Real Property Taxes, Credits, Businesses/Business Entities Affected by a State of Emergency.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 4121, Resolution Approving the Terms and Conditions of the Acquisition of Real Property Consisting of Between Approximately .62 Plus or Minus Acres and .765 Plus or Minus Acres, Known as 443 Crane Highway, Glen Burnie, Maryland 21061, from HB Incorporated, Utilizing Funds from the Advanced Land Acquisition Capital Project. Resolution Number 4221, Resolution Nominating a Member to Serve on the Anarundel County Ethics Commission. Resolution Number 4321, Resolution Appointing Members of the Salary Standard Commission.
Thank you. We will vote on Resolution Numbers 42 and 4321 at the end of the meeting this evening. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6621 as amended.
Bill Number 6621, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning, Parking, Non-Residential Outdoor Lighting and Signage, Prohibited Signs and Temporary Signs.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. We spoke about this bill at length during the last meeting, right before the August recess, so I don't need to add anything right now. We can go to public hearing on the amended bill, and I do have a couple more amendments this evening, but I can save my remarks for later on unless there are questions at this
Good evening, Mr. Barron. Would the administration have any comments at this time?
Good evening, Madam Chair. As the sponsor noted, we've discussed this bill a couple of times now. I think we'll reserve our comments, but I will like to introduce everybody to the folks joining me at the table, from Office of Law, Ms. Lori Blair-Klausmeyer, our DCAO for Land Use, Ms. Lori Rhodes, and from OPZ, Ms. Lynn Miller. So happy to answer any questions or proceed with public hearing and discuss the amendments when appropriate.
Thank you. Are there any questions at this time? Ms. Rodvien?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No problem. Okay, then we will go ahead and open the public hearing on Bill Number 6621 as amended. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair. We did receive one submission of testimony through the online tool that was shared with the entire council and has been added to the record.
Okay. We will now open the public hearing. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. I have two people signed up at the moment, and if you would please come to the table to give your testimony, Sarah Price and Andrea Caramante. Good evening, Ms. Price. You may go ahead. Please state your name and address for the record. You have two minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, my name is Sarah Price. I'm here on behalf of the Maryland Retailers Association, which is located at 171 Conduit Street in Annapolis. I am here in continued support of this bill. We again thank the sponsor for bringing it forward and for proposing additional amendments to address the concerns that were raised by the council at the previous hearing. I particularly believe that Amendment Number 7, which would limit the, which would propose a limit of four win signs per property, is a very happy compromise for allowing businesses to use the signs that they need while also keeping in mind concerns of residents who may be living close to commercial zones and had concerns about what that might look like in their neighborhood. So again, we support the bill, we support the amendments, and we ask that you also support this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Caramante?
Hi, my name is Andrea Caramante. I'm representing my business, The Painted Cottage. I'm located at 164 West Central Avenue in Edgewater. It's a luxury boutique situated in historic 1947 Cape Cod house that we converted into a retail store. It has lots of character, and I take great pride in its aesthetics, both inside and outside of the structure. However, we're not located in a strip center where people can easily see us. As a destination store, we rely heavily on the traffic driving by, and the house sits back off of Route 214 and Central Avenue. And many similarly situated businesses in my area are also trying to attract customers, and so the flutter flags are prevalent. I purchased new flags to let people know that we are back, open for business after barely surviving the COVID-19 forced shutdown in 2020, only to be asked to take down the flags. A county official stopped by my store to let me know the flags are in violation of county code. We were completely unaware of such restrictions, and there are multiple flags currently flying in front of our business in our area. Our flags are new, and the other in the zone are tattered and faded, reflecting the longevity of the flags flying for quite some time. I took down my flag, and it has greatly influenced the number of new customers entering our store. It was my experience that brought this issue to the council's attention. We are the only gift shop and boutique in our area and the only one that survived COVID shutdown in Edgewater. Daily customers suggest that we put open flags by the roadside to let people know that we're still in business. Small businesses are already facing so many challenges post-COVID, including the lack of product arriving in a timely manner, the struggle to hire and retain qualified employees. We would just like to have the opportunity to let people know that we're open and that we are here to serve our community. I submitted written testimony for the last hearing, and I'm glad to be able to testify in support of Councilwoman Hare's amendment to allow businesses to display up to four flutter flags. Thank you.
Thank you. Clearly, you are quite a resilient business owner and one of many in the county, so best of luck to you. The current panel is dismissed, and if there's anybody else who would like to come testify on Bill 6621, now is the time to please come down. Welcome, sir. Please state your name and address for the record, and you will have two minutes.
Please consider reinstalling the podium. For people who don't like to sit, it's helpful. I'm Mike Lofton. I'm a resident of Poling House Road in Harwood. I am here tonight on behalf of Growth Action Network. The network is a 501(c)(3) alliance of about 55 individual members and 30 member organizations. Our organizations have a total membership of exceeding 20,000 Anarundel County residents. Anarundel County sign policies are in failure mode. I think the last testimony confirms that. Illegal signs are ubiquitous, enforcement is either ineffective or nonexistent, and I appreciate Councilwoman Hare's bringing this matter to the council's attention. We believe, however, that a more comprehensive approach is warranted here. We've read research that confirms that roadside advertising is an effective marketing tool and a useful source of information for consumers. Unfortunately, the current code and the inadequate enforcement frequently turn our roadways into an ugly blizzard of self-defeating arms-raised signage amongst advertisers. The current code contains no consequences for violations. Not surprisingly, violations are rampant and repeat offenders' routine. There are a number of jurisdictions in this region that offer better models on how to do this, Fairfax County being one. In addition to the visual blight, we encourage you to consider the track of traffic safety consequences of these signs. Clearly, they're designed to distract drivers. There must be some scholarly research that would evaluate the traffic threat, the accident threat posed by these. I haven't seen any submitted in connection with these changes. Finally, please consider a simple, free, online permit that would require a sign owner to register online. This would provide an understanding of the scale of roadside advertising in the county, educate sign owners and the public as to requirements, and where time limits are required, the permit would document the allowed period. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lofton. I apologize for not recognizing you. You changed your hair since I last saw you.
It's almost all gone, so I won't change it.
All right. Well, seeing no one else coming down to speak, the public hearing on Bill Number 6621 as amended is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6621 as amended.
Bill Number 6621, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning, Parking, Non-Parking, Non-Residential Outdoor Lighting and Signage, Prohibited Signs and Temporary Signs.
Thank you. And I'm certain we have further discussion. Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. I appreciate the comments from everyone. I agree that a comprehensive approach is definitely needed for the sign code. I know that we've been talking about signs now for a number of years and through a number of bills. It's certainly a challenge I would like to take on and start. I do believe that this is a good beginning, and actually, when I first started this, I was looking at it thinking commercial businesses, but I was down at a farm this morning, and ironically, the produce stand that I was at had a flutter flag. And the woman there said, I had no idea that these were not allowed, and no one would be able to see my produce stand if I didn't have one of these flutter flags. And, you know, it's only there on the weekends and when I'm actually here during the mornings to be able to do this, but it certainly, for that particular farm, is a very necessary piece of marketing for their survival. So I do think that it is an important, an important piece of legislation to allow, while we do take a more comprehensive look at the rest of the code. I'll save the rest of my remarks for when the amendments are up.
Mr. Barron, or shall we go to the amendments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron. Just really quick, the administration agrees with the sponsor, the importance of local businesses being able to attract customers. We'll talk about the amendments when they come, but spoiler alert, I think we've hit a nice compromise.
All right. And with that, Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 7.
Amendment Number 7. This amendment modifies the limitation on the number of temporary signs allowed on a private property to apply to win signs only.
Ms. Hare, you're the sponsor of this amendment. You can make a brief statement.
Sure, thank you. I think this is fairly self-explanatory. When I first introduced the bill, the intent was to allow some flutter flags in addition to the other temporary signs that are already allowed under the code. In doing so, I inadvertently ran afoul of the First Amendment, as we discussed at the last meeting, which was never my intention. So this corrects that by making it clear that the limitation imposed is for the flutter flag. flags, not necessarily for any other free speech sign that is already allowed under the code.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Hare, so moved.
And a second?
Second, Pickard.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Pete Barron with the administration. The administration is not opposed. We agree about protecting the First Amendment, think this will achieve the sponsor's intent.
Mr. Volkey, are you using your flag?
I am.
Okay.
Am I supposed to do that still?
Blow on it first, and then you can go.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. I am curious, I don't know if this is administration or if it's a sponsor question, but how did we land at four? How did we decide that four was the appropriate number of signs here?
Jessica Hare, District 7. It's an art, not a science on this one. It was more that, you know, I can think of, certainly I see them in South County where you see fresh produce, corn, tomatoes, cucumbers. I can think of a place that might say, "Open Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m." We could find a number that five seemed too many, three didn't seem like enough, but certainly it was an art, not a science.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you. So I guess with that, part of what I have a little bit of concern is if you've got, you know, a sign frontage or a road frontage of 100 feet, or you've got road frontage of 1,000 feet, you've got the same number of signs there that you're being allowed to put in with this four limitation. Was there any consideration given to the idea of spacing this maybe with how much road frontage you have to say, at a certain number of feet in terms of road frontage, you would get a sign? Therefore, it would space them out and address some of the concerns about them looking clumped, because you certainly could have a clumped look even with four if you had a very small amount of signs, or a very small amount of road frontage. So I just don't know if that was part of the consideration.
Jessica Hare, District 7. So when I was looking at it, I was thinking mostly about where people enter and exit, and so most places, even if you have 1,000 feet of frontage, you're probably putting many, if you're going to have a sign, it's going to be near where the entrance is. And so that really doesn't differ necessarily between places. There's flexibility in there, obviously. If you have, you're not going to want to clutter any business, or a company's not going to want to clutter their area, because I think it actually could detract if they have too many, right? People get turned off by it. So I think if they have a smaller frontage, they may only want one, but really was thinking from an entrance standpoint and where people you'd be trying to attract the traffic.
Anyone else with a question or comment? Mr. Barron?
Nothing further to add, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right. Seeing no further discussion, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Seven.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Prousky?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Seven is adopted.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Eight.
Amendment Number Eight. This amendment adds limitations on the period of time of which a temporary sign related to an event may be displayed.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. So currently, under the sign code before this bill was introduced, or really even right now, temporary signs are already defined as something that you put in 60 days before an event and you pull up seven days after the event. In working on this bill, we had in here provisions where temporary signs could be for two 60-day periods. But for events, the existing law actually seems to make quite a bit of sense, and from a traffic safety or a cluttering the landscape perspective, pulling them up after the event is over seems to make quite a lot of sense. So this amendment simply, it allows, again, for signs that are not related to an event to have that two 60-day periods throughout the year, but for signs that are related to an event, it would be the status quo, what is currently the law, which is 60 days before to seven days after. Happy to answer any questions on that, but with that, I would move to adopt.
There's been a motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second, Allison Pickard.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Pete Barron with the administration. We'd like to thank the sponsor for sharing this with us in advance. I think as this discussion has shown, it's a delicate balance, and we're comfortable, the administration is comfortable with this approach.
And do any of my colleagues have any further comments? Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the administration, so the concerns that I'm hearing about signs being clumped, I know that happens a lot in right-ofways, and a lot of times those signs are illegally there or they're illegally left there. With respect to signs on private property, which are typically not what are impacting the right-ofway, because the county normally owns that part of the road or that part of this side of the street that would allow them to police that, how many complaints are you getting about signs on private property? So I want to understand, like, I hear people's concerns about it clutters up the roadway. A lot of those cluttering of the roadway concerns deal with right-ofway concerns.
Thank you, Councilman Volkey, Pete Barron with the administration. I'm going to turn to Ms. Miller if she has a sense. Don't think it's an avalanche of complaints, but I don't know if we have a number handy.
Hi, Lynn Miller, Planning and Zoning. Mr. Barron's correct, I don't have a specific number handy. We can look that up and send it to you by email, but I don't have it. And Mr. Barron's also correct, we don't get a huge number of complaints about signs, but we do get some, and they're usually a mix of temporary signs or permanent signs.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
So to follow up on that, Ms. Miller, when you say you get the complaints on the temporary signs or permanent signs, what have you, again, are those on private property or are those in right-ofways? And if they're on private property, what's the typical complaint that you would see for that?
Again, I think I would have to do a query of our databases to say what's the mix between whether they're on private property or in public right-ofways. But the complaints can generally deal with the size of the sign, the length of time that it's been posted, sometimes the number of signs. Of course, the current code doesn't limit the number of temporary signs, so it's a range of items.
Councilman Volkey, if the bill has been amended, we will pull this information and get it to you before the next meeting.
Anyone else?
As best we can, sir.
With questions? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Eight.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Mr. Prousky?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Amendment Number Eight is adopted.
Thank you. Bill Number 6621 as amended will be heard on September 20th, 2021. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6721.
Bill Number 6721: An Ordinance Concerning Public Ethics, Financial Disclosure, Legislative Counsel to the County Council.
And we have Mr. Batzares joining us. Good evening. In my script, I could have the floor first, but I'd prefer you have the floor first, since I've introduced the bill on behalf of the Ethics Commission.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete, do you have anything to say? Put them there.
Just Pete Barron with the administration. Greg Swain, our county attorney, is joining us. I think we have Ms. Lori Blair-Klaus Meyer here as well. If there are any questions, as Madam Chair noted, this bill was requested by the Ethics Commission, not the administration.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Michael Batzares, Director, Ethics Commission. This is a bill that was requested by the Ethics Commission, and it's requesting the additional disclosure in form of a financial disclosure statement to be filed by the Legislative Council position. The commission felt that the Legislative Council position is in a position to influence legislation. They felt that there's the potential to influence language and wording of legislation, while at the same time, the Legislative Council position is free and able to engage in the private practice of law as well in the county, representing private clients, sometimes in matters similar to legislation that may or may not be funded. So for those reasons, the Ethics Commission, after review, is respectfully asking this council to approve its request to add one more financial disclosure statement to the numerous that we already receive in review on an annual basis. And I'll be happy to answer any further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Batzares. Are there any questions for my colleagues at this time? Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Batzares, you may not know this, and if you don't, Mr. Swain probably knows it or Mr. Barron, are the attorneys in the office of law currently required to file financial disclosure statements, all of the attorneys in the office of law?
Councilman Volkey, Michael Batzares, Director, Ethics Commission. Only the county attorney and the deputy county attorneys are required to file financial disclosure statements at the current time. There is no requirement that other county attorneys file, and the commission has considered that in the past, and it has seen no reason why, why that they should be or need to be included at this time.
And that's within the code currently, just the county attorney and the deputies?
Correct.
Are you aware of any policies that exist that require the other county attorneys to file a financial disclosure statement?
I'm not. As long as I've been in the position, I've not reviewed any other county attorney financial disclosure statements. With that said, the county executive does have the authority to request additional disclosure of any particular employee if he so chooses.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. Mr. Batzares, do you know how other counties handle this issue? I mean, is this something that every other, you know, council to the, sorry, council to the council in any other county, do they all do this? Is this relatively new?
Well, I've not done any research on that, Councilwoman Hare. I don't know if every other county has a Legislative Council position. I don't know whether that council position is in a position to practice private practice at the same time that she's advising the council on legislative matters. That's an issue that the commission felt it didn't need to look into, because it had a concern about this county and this particular Legislative Council practicing private law as well as advising the council on legal matters.
Mr. Prousky?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Batzares. Just a quick follow-up, Councilman Andrew Prousky. Did the Ethics Commission, and I don't know if you can add to this or not, was there something that prompted this? Is this just, you know, people open discussions? I was just curious on the genesis of, you know, this, like, where it came from. I know, obviously, one of our best practices within law is, but I don't know if you had any additional info that kind of led to that, and that's why I think Ms. Hare was asking about, like, what, you know, are there other models that are used?
Right, right. But without violating any confidentiality requirements, I will say that there were inquiries with the council that the commission received that led them to investigate further whether or not any disclosure statements were in fact on file, needed to be on file, or could be reviewed. So it was not a matter of looking at other jurisdictions and saying, "This would be a best practice act." This was a matter of following up on a particular inquiry and trying to do the job of the Ethics Commission.
Thank you.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. Mr. Batzares, when you mentioned confidentiality, that actually kind of triggered a thought in my head. From an attorney perspective, right, there is a duty of confidentiality, and there's attorney-client privilege and things like that, and I do wonder if some of the questions on the financial disclosure form might cause issues with a legislative council and their duty of confidentiality to their clients. Has anybody looked at that issue?
I don't think so. I can't think of any particular question that would. If it did in that case, I assume it would also for the county attorney, deputy county attorney, and other persons in the same or similar situation. But I can't think of any particular question. If there's a particular question on there that you have a concern about, I'd be happy to look at it, but...
I don't remember the question off the top of my head, but I do know there's something on there about whether you worked with or received compensation from any business that does business with the county, right? And I'm just wondering if an attorney is representing that business, if that might have any issue for our Legislative Council in terms of her confidentiality.
Well, that's something we can address on a case-by-case basis, I assume. You know, all attorneys are still also required, you know, to sustain to the Maryland Code of Professional Responsibility with regard to confidentiality, and if answering one of our questions would be a violation of that, I'm sure that could be raised in a reason for failing to disclose that particular issue.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I'm going to jump in with a question. This is Sarah Lacy, District 1. So could we maybe clarify the situation that the Ethics Commission is concerned about by thinking about lobbyists and, you know, not anything specific to our current Legislative Council's practice, but just you have, the council has a Legislative Council, that person maintains an outside practice of law with the knowledge and consent of his or her clients, being the seven of us, but say that person, one of their clients, is a business who has then asked that council to act as a lobbyist on one of our pieces of legislation, and the council doesn't tell us that that's what he or she is doing. In that case, the council would be acting as an unregistered lobbyist, correct?
There's a scenario where that could happen, yes.
What would be the penalties for acting as an unregistered lobbyist?
Well, you're required to register first off. If you refused or failed to register, then the penalties are various up to the point where prohibiting that person or lobbyist from communicating with any government officials.
And is there an intersection or an overlap also with any, I guess, any consequences under the Maryland Rules of Professional Conduct for lawyers?
I'd have to review those again.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you.
I've not looked at those in a long time.
I figured you had them memorized, actually, but that's all right.
I've got the Ethics Code memorized. I do not have the Code of Professional Responsibility memorized.
Ms. Pickard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question that's more regarding the process of this bill coming to our table tonight. We've not, because we've been on recess, we haven't had the benefit of a work session where often we tackle questions before we're at a public hearing situation. As we're a professional public body of seven people, was there any thought of drafting a memo to the council about the concern of financial disclosures, not just with possibly our legal counsel, but the rest of our staff, and bringing this to our attention so that we could fully evaluate it before we had a bill in front of us? I'm not sure the Ethics Commission fully understands how this council utilizes staff to draft legislation, and currently, the only person on our staff that we appoint is Madam Auditor that fills out a financial disclosure. So this, I'm just curious as to why this is a bill before it was a memo or a conversation with this council.
Well, the Ethics Commission is also mandated with the duty to recommend any improvement or changes to the Ethics Code that it feels is necessary as it performs its function. There's no requirement that they contact the county council to get their opinion. Obviously, if the county council does not want to sponsor the bill, does not want to approve the bill, that's your ultimate decision. But I think two years ago, when we did a fairly big overhaul of the Ethics Bill, there was, we met with the administration, but there was no county council involvement prior to the bill being introduced and reviewed.
Follow-up? I'm not sure you've answered my question. I'm not trying to make this an interrogation. I'm just curious about the process. If we're going to be talking about who on our staff is responsible for filling out a financial disclosure, I think before we were at a bill, we could have had a broader conversation about the other, you know, out of the 90, ooh, need my glasses, 94 county employees that are currently required by county code. I just think there could have been a back and forth before we ended up with legislation in front of us. I'm not saying I'm for or against this bill, I'm just trying to understand the way this works, and maybe in the future, if we're looking to change the code... And maybe in the future, if we're looking to change the code, especially as it relates to the county council, would it be more productive to have received, the seven of us receiving some sort of memo from the Ethics Commission about this concern before we were looking at a bill? That's just...
Councilwoman Pickard, I do appreciate your concerns, and I understand where you're coming from. You know, the Ethics Commission looks at the legislative council position as a county employee, like any other county employee. Just the fact that she works for the seven of you does not negate the fact that she is a county employee, subject to the county Ethics Code, similar to every other county employee. We don't often go to other directors or other county officials when the commission feels that there's necessity to change the code in order to further the duties that they've been mandated with under that code. So while it may be a good idea to approach the council with recommendations or thoughts in the future, and I will certainly bring that to the commission's attention, I don't think it's a requirement, nor do I think it's ever been done in the past.
Go ahead.
I just think it's important for the Ethics Commission that clearly there's a concern about one person that this council relies on to help draft legislation. I'm not, you know, there's other people this council work with on our staff. And maybe if a conversation had taken place or some sort of, we would be in a different, we would have a different piece of legislation before us, or possibly none at all. That was my only point.
I understand. I think there was some conversation because there was questions about other staff members possibly needing or should be required to file financial disclosure statements. And, you know, we had those conversations, I think it was with Madam Lacy or Madam Secretary, when we were considering this, and the commission, you know, considered those thoughts and requested the bill as stated. So I wouldn't say we've done it in a vacuum.
Mr. Batzaris, if I might suggest, we do have, we have to go through the public hearing. We have an amendment that we would like to consider. I don't know if other colleagues have a question right at the moment, but perhaps you could convey to the Chair of the Ethics Commission that it would be nice for them to come speak to us about this bill, given that what any bill that we adopt at this point interferes with an existing attorney-client relationship as opposed to applying to someone who comes on new. It would go immediately into effect. So I think that's a fair consideration that the seven of us would have, particularly given, I don't know when's the last time there was a council that had a majority of lawyers or trained attorneys on it. But it's certainly something that we could give more thought to, I think, is the overall sense I received from my colleagues in any event. But if anyone else has a comment now, I'm happy to take it. Otherwise, we'll go to the public hearing. Seeing none. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 6721. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. We did not receive any submissions of testimony.
All right. We will now open the in-person public hearing. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. I don't think anyone signed up in advance. Is there anyone currently in the room who would like to testify on the bill? You would have to stand up, then I would know. Seeing no one standing up, okay. Then the public hearing on Bill Number 6721 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6721.
Bill Number 6721: An Ordinance Concerning Public Ethics, Financial Disclosure, Legislative Council to the County Council.
Thank you. There is one amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 1.
Amendment Number 1. This amendment requires each attorney in the county office of law to file with the Ethics Commission a financial disclosure statement.
Thank you. Mr. Volkey, you're the sponsor. You can make a brief statement.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I understand the desire of the Ethics Commission to have a financial disclosure for our legislative council, and I actually, I get it. I do think that there are other attorneys in the office of law beyond just the highest level attorneys who do work with the council sometimes on legislation. It's not necessarily a rule, but I've worked with some of the other people who are not, you know, the top-level folks. I did look up County Executive Shoes, Executive Order 11, which I believe is still in place, that restricts the outside practice of law by attorneys in the office of law and requires that they avoid conflicts of interest and ensure that they are not basically representing people they're not supposed to because they're county employees. I think that I had been under the impression, it sounds like incorrectly, that there was already a requirement for the county attorneys, all of them, to file a financial disclosure. I think that it would take the next step just to make sure that they're also filing that disclosure, considering that they may work with us on legislation from time to time. And they certainly are likely advising the higher-up decision-makers who are then doing the ultimate advice to the council. So for that reason, I'm putting forward this amendment to the bill. I think of it as hopefully a friendly amendment. It's not intended to create more problems, but I do think that it just expands the universe of people who have a potential hand in legislation who are now having to disclose any potential conflicts of interest. So with that, I'd make a motion to adopt the bill, the amendment, excuse me.
Is there a second?
Fiedler, second.
Thank you. Mr. Batzaris, would you like to respond on the amendment?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, Councilman Volkey. I just saw the amendment a couple days ago. I think Mr. Barron sent it over to me and have not had time to completely review it. I did pass it along to the commission. I've only received a few responses, and those responses are similar to my initial responses that they didn't think, nor do I think it's necessary nor needed for attorneys other than those in a supervisory or managerial decision-making position to file financial disclosure statements. Now, you know, we do have two documents. One is a conflict of interest statement, which is a much less demanding document, which may be more appropriate in this instance for them to file a conflict of interest statement as opposed to a full financial disclosure document, because a full financial disclosure statement, as you all know, are public records that can be reviewed by anyone that requests And again, the full commission hasn't had time to consider the amendment. We do have a meeting on September 13th. I'm sure there'll be some discussion about it at that time, but my initial impression and my personal reaction is that it's really not needed or necessary, although I would consider a conflict of interest statement as some sort of compromise or alternative.
Mr. Batzaris, if we were to say that any, whoever is our legislative council would just need to file a conflict of interest statement as pertinent for any matters in the outside practice of law in which they're engaged, that wouldn't require us to adopt this bill, right? I mean, that's already a procedure that you have in place at the Ethics Commission?
No, there would be a requirement that an annual conflict of interest statement be filed by the particular employee. Yeah, it's similar to board and commission members. Many board and commission members don't file financial disclosure statements, but they do file conflict of interest statements, and they're listed in the code in the same section where it lists financial disclosure statements. You'll see a section on conflict of interest statement required filings. So we would have to include that position in the code.
Okay. Ms. Pickard?
Uh...
No, sorry.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I was going in the same direction as you were. And again, if we'd had some opportunity, we could maybe have had a more informed conversation sitting here about the difference between a conflict of interest and financial disclosure, and if one was more in line with what we feel is appropriate. What are your thoughts on that, conflict of interest statement versus a financial disclosure?
The Ethics Commission considered that, and they thought a financial disclosure statement was the most appropriate vehicle for protecting the public in this situation for this position of legislative council.
I apologize. Before I go to my two colleagues, I should have offered the administration the chance to speak on this amendment, given that this is a, this proposal would change requirements in the office of law. Mr. Swain, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Good evening. Craig Swain, I'm the county attorney. My position is that I don't agree with this amendment, and it's for a couple of reasons. Our legislative deputy county attorney is Ms. Lori Blair-Closmeier, and she does file a financial disclosure statement. We have 20 employees, 20 attorneys in the office of law, and maybe out of those 20, maybe four or five deal with legislation on a regular basis. The, I mean, I would say, if you are going to make the attorneys file financial disclosure statements because of their involvement in the legislative process, that should logically extend to all the reps from the office of planning and zoning who come in and testify and help with drafting legislation, and every other county department. So the biggest difference between the, our staff attorneys on the office of law and legislative council is we are prevented by charter from practicing outside the office of law. We are limited to only practicing in the office of law, and that's Charter Section 529. In addition to that, other than probably any other county or any other county employees other than maybe engineers, you know, we have a comprehensive Code of Ethics or Code of Professional Responsibility that all the attorneys are bound by as well. So we certainly, I certainly feel it's appropriate for the county attorney and the deputy county attorneys to file financial disclosure statements, but I just don't see the need why staff attorneys should be filing financial disclosure statements for the reasons I've just stated. Very few are involved in the process, and there's not much difference between our staff attorneys working on legislation and department reps from other departments working on legislation who do not file financial disclosure statements.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. Mr. Batzaris, could you help me understand the primary difference between the financial disclosure form and the conflict of interest form? I mean, really, from a meat-and-potato standpoint, what is the difference in the questions that they're answering, and why is it that the commission felt like the financial disclosure form was the more appropriate one?
Well, obviously, the financial disclosure statement asks for financial information. The conflict of interest statement are basically yes-no questions asking about any potential conflicts of interest that you may be aware of. Both are tools used by the commission when investigating either inquiries or complaints about potential conflicts of interest. The financial disclosure statement goes into a lot more detail about, you know, an employee's financial relationship and financial dealings with entities outside the county which may or may not do business with the county. It can also give the Ethics Commission some insight into where potential conflicts may occur that aren't necessarily reported on conflict of interest statements. If everyone reported accurately on conflict of interest statements, I guess we wouldn't even need an Ethics Commission. But unfortunately, there is an investigative process that we have to go through when we receive complaints that require us to look into dealings between county employees and third-party offenders, third-party clients, third-party customers, which are maybe beyond the simple yes-no answer of a conflict of interest statement. So, you know, the Ethics Commission did consider that as one alternative, but for a position like the legislative council position, the commission felt that the financial disclosure statement was the more thorough and would further assist the commission in dealing with inquiries, complaints, or concerns that were raised with anyone in that position at that particular time. I can give you copies of the forms, or you can get them from our website and see the exact differences, and maybe that may be helpful to go through the forms and see the differences, but I'm just kind of giving you a summary or an outline.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Swain, I'm reading 525 in the Charter. It looks like it only applies to the county attorney as not engaging in the practice of law. Is that wrong?
If you're reading it, I'm sure it's right, but there is an executive order. I've been with the office for 10 years, and the practice of, outside practice of law has always been prohibited.
Okay, because I'm reading in 525, and it says, "The county attorney shall serve on a full-time basis and shall not engage in the private practice of law while county attorney." I don't see anything about the others, but I do see in that shoe Executive Order 11 where it requires, or prohibits, I should say, outside practice by anybody in the office. Would you have the same objection to anyone in the office of law, the attorneys filing a conflict of interest form as opposed to the financial disclosure form?
Well, the conflicts of interest are also something that's covered under the Maryland Rules of Professional Conduct, is you're not permitted to have a conflict of interest.
Right.
I'd have to take a look at that issue because I have not looked at it. So I'm not sure I could give you a good answer tonight. But, you know, I do think the duty to report a conflict is already there. It's already imposed by state law.
Okay, thank you.
If I may add, Mr. Volkey, Michael Batzaris, that the consequences are much more severe under the Code of Professional Responsibility because it's suspension or loss of your license to practice law. As you should be well aware of.
Understood.
Anyone else on Amendment 1? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 1.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment Number 1 has been defeated.
Is there any further discussion? I'm going to make a comment. I think we're all a bit, a bit perturbed, it might be slightly too strong, but maybe distressed is an old-fashioned way of saying, I think we'd like to be able to work better together with the Ethics Commission on crafting this bill. I don't think anybody's comfortable with it from the faces that I see around the table. And since the commission meets on September 13th, I might suggest that if my colleagues would like to move to hold the vote on the bill, we would have the opportunity to consider amendments. We've got plenty of time before the bill expires.
Volkey, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Allison Pickard.
I guess that motion would be to hold until the September 20th, 2021, meeting. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to hold the vote until the September 20th meeting has been adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6821.
Bill Number 6821: An Ordinance Concerning Public Safety, Animal Care and Control: Authority to Impound Tethering of Dogs.
Mr. Barron, this is an administration bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me at the table from Animal Care and Control is Ms. Robin Catlett. From our police department is Captain Adams, and from office of law, Mr. Ritter. This Bill, 6821, is a reform that was requested out of discussions with our professionals in the police department and in animal care and control, specifically around the difficulties in enforcing a specific section of the code. This bill will clarify that the prohibition of tethering dogs is requiring that an adult be physically present and able to see the animal. This change seeks to resolve an issue where animal care and control were faced with dog owners tethering their animals for extensive period without direct physical supervision by, but claiming that they were observing their animal virtually through a surveillance camera, typically a ring doorbell or ring cameras, I think what was cited. The, and that was used as an effort to rebuff the attempts to enforce this section of code. Ms. Catlett, our administrator of Animal Care and Control, is here if you have any questions and if you have anything you want to add, Ms. Catlett, but we ask that you move this bill tonight.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm here in support of the bill and certainly happy to answer questions, but as was said, this is to essentially make it more easy for us to enforce the code. this is to essentially make it more easy for us to enforce the code, because we cannot prove without a doubt in front of a jury or in front of a judge what someone can or cannot see from inside their home when we go out. And we have had issues with citizens leaving pets outside for as long as 24 hours a day right now, tethered and saying, "Well, I'm home. I can see it." We can't prove whether they're awake or asleep inside. There's no way for us to prove whether they can supervise the pet. We've also had times where we show up at the home to see a pet tethered, and when we get there, someone contacts us in the ring doorbell and says, "I'm watching. I'm watching my pet." And they may get home in 15 minutes, they may get home an hour later, but we've had times where the animals are tangled, and no one is there going and providing assistance to the animal. We've had times where the animals don't have water, don't have shelter, shade has been removed, blown over, other things like that, and we're not able to remedy that for the animal or for the members of the community that are suffering mentally from seeing animals in distress.
Thank you, Ms. Catlett. Actually, I have some constituents who contacted me in District 1 about that exact same situation, so I'm personally pleased to see this bill. Are there any questions from the Council before we go to the public hearing? Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Ms. Catlett, I'm reading this Section 12481. Is the prohibition on tethering, whether it's between 32 and 90 degrees, or is it only if it's under 32 or over 90?
So, the, you can't tether at all?
Period.
Is, is with the temperature restrictions, but it's allowed in normal or more reasonable temperatures, just has to be properly supervised.
And what does that mean?
So, with this, it would mean that you are outside and can directly see the animal.
So, if it's 60 degrees outside, it's a clear day, it's not bad weather, the animal is tethered in the yard, somebody's in the house, if this bill passes, that would be a violation?
Correct.
Okay.
However, it's important to know that if they're in the house and it's 60 degrees and they're not watching the animal, we've had situations where the animal has jumped a fence and could be strangling itself. We've had situations where police has responded and an animal has dug out from under a fence and is then in the public area but still on a tether. So, we have situations where it's extremely important that you be outside and within sight of the animal, because in those instances, an animal finds its way to jump into a stairwell, something like that, an animal can die in a matter of a minute.
May I follow up?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In those instances, if the animal did jump the fence, if the animal did dig under the fence, if the animal was in a stairwell, would those be per se violations of the appropriate supervision of tethering that would then allow you to go to that judge or jury to prove that someone under the existing code had violated the existing code?
That would be up to probably a judge to determine. I mean, one could make an argument that they were there and they just couldn't get out fast enough to help the animal, right?
So, have you had that argument where you all have made that, and you've been unsuccessful, and you're losing that argument in court?
Right now, with COVID, we had cases today that were from a year and a half ago that were dismissed because of the time that passed when getting to court. So, I really can't answer that, because we haven't been there with the way the court system has been working right now.
So, even prior to COVID, I'm sure you all had this issue. So, if we go to the pre-COVID time period, and I know how you like spreadsheets and charts, and I appreciate that about you, do you have any data to support that you were going forward with these cases prior to COVID, and you were losing them because of this exact restriction that was not in place?
Really, pre-COVID, these are new issues that are being raised. Pre-COVID, the ring doorbells wasn't an issue that somebody was saying, "I was using to supervise my animal." And when the Administration passed this legislation previously, the intent was that the animals would be under direct supervision, and we talked about someone could be washing dishes or something along those lines, and it would be a very temporary thing. But we've now had citizens that are really testing the level of supervision that we didn't have citizens test before.
Okay.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Catlett, I certainly appreciate what this bill is attempting to do. The one area that I have a question on is, and I do appreciate Councilman Volkey's questions, because I wanted to understand that as well, but the age of the person who has to be present is over 18 years of age. To me, being a dog owner and having children who are very involved in the care and watching over the dog, 18 seems pretty old. I mean, I think of a 16-year-old who has a dog-walking business, who would be very able and capable of doing the same job. Is there a reason that age was chosen?
Well, I would say a 16-year-old dog-walking won't apply to the tethering, for sure. A 16-year-old is dog-walking, we're not hooking an animal to something and leaving it in circumstances, we're paying direct attention to the animal. 18 tends to be an age that we use for other sections of the code. I don't know if Office of Law wants to weigh in more here as well, but generally speaking, for dangerous, potentially dangerous circumstances, it's a responsible adult, someone that could handle the situation. And while certainly maybe sometimes a 16-year-old can, a responsible adult ensures that it's someone that we could hold responsible for failing to do so.
Madam Chair, if I may ask a follow-up? Go ahead.
Thank you. So, in that example, I certainly understand that a 16-year-old walking, having a business, is a little different than tethering. In my mind, I'm thinking of a scenario where there is an older adult who is home. Practice is to tether the dog while the kids are out playing. I couldn't give any number of scenarios. Adult over the age of 18 is inside for maybe 20 minutes, half an hour, puts in charge a 16-year-old. You are the one who is out here responsible, I'm right inside, yell if you need me, or dress appropriately if the dog gets into a safety issue. That's where I just, I struggle with the age of 18, because I think that that perhaps could limit responsible owners who are trying to do the right thing then fall in violation if they don't have a child in the household or a young adult in the household who is 18, so.
May I ask, what age would you suggest?
That's a really great, great question. I think it would certainly young elementary school child, maybe not, but I just think 18 is a pretty high bar to set for families that do rely on younger teenagers, younger than 18, to help with the care of an animal. That's my, why I'm asking these questions, so thank you.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. Along those lines, what is the age where you can babysit in this county? Because to me, that strikes me as potentially the appropriate, 13? So, I mean, if I'm thinking about it, I think at least as young as 13, if you, if the county says that someone's able to take care of another child, I think that's also an appropriate age to take care of an animal.
That's state law.
The state law, there we go, so that's state law. But then I also had a question, and maybe this gets to the same thing. You mentioned about washing dishes and being able to watch the animal. Obviously, you're necessarily inside, and this bill requires that you be outside. So, are we trying to come up with a situation where someone could wash the dishes and have their animal outside, maybe with their 13-year-old outside as well? Or are we really trying to say that the adult over 18 has to be outside at all times?
So, in answer to that, that was, when the original bill was passed, that was the type of situation that was intended to be allowed. But unfortunately, we're finding that that's failing in terms of our level to be able to enforce it, because there may be an adult home. The adult could be sleeping, the adult could be, you know, the cases that have brought this up have been animals that have been tethered 24/7. Animal Care and Control cannot prove whether or not you work at night. We can't prove from inside your home whether or not you can see the pet. Even if we think you can't see the pet, we can't prove that you can't, unless we have something that allows us to have something that is enforceable from the moment you get there. We get there, we can see who's outside, we can see whether that's a 13-year-old, we can see whether that's an 18-year-old, we can see whether that is no one that is outside within the line of sight. Once you allow someone, unfortunately, in this situation, what has happened is that we've had people that say, "I am watching," and we can't prove otherwise. So, how do we help the animal? We can't.
Okay.
Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Rodvian, District 6. I wanted to just add to another age, piece of the age. We actually earlier, in the past year, determined that we would allow 15-year-olds to be lifeguards. I believe that's correct, and we have another bill on that topic. But my concern with this bill, it actually comes from an experience with a family member. So, I have a family member who adopted a wonderful sweet pit bull, had a fenced yard, was able to keep the dog in the fenced yard, quickly learned, and that was the plan for exercise. When the dog was adopted, it was known that this dog was not friendly with other dogs, so a dog park wasn't going to be option. Walking wasn't really going to be an option, because inevitably, if the weather's nice, you're going to encounter other dogs. So, the plan for the dog's exercise was to be in the backyard. I know you work with animals, so it's probably not surprising to you that the owner quickly discovered that their pit bull was able to easily climb a six-foot fence. And so, in order for that, in order for that animal to have any outside time, it really needed to be on a tether, even with the person in the yard. But I think, what my concern here is that if we require the over-18 person to be outdoors with the dog, we're going to capture so many dog owners that really are observing and, you know, supervising their animals and, you know, taking the appropriate measures, like watching, oh, the dog's tongue is, you know, lolling out, dog's getting a little warm, time to bring the dog inside. And so, that's my concern, especially with requiring the person to be outdoors. You know, I feel like expecting them to be on the property is absolutely understandable. I think the ring, you know, the ring thing, obviously, if you're not on the property, if something happens, you can't do anything. But my concern is requiring that person to be outdoors with the animal. Dog ownership, especially, you know, dogs that are difficult to adopt, is already challenging. You know, you can see the experience of my family member who, you know, planned on having a fence, fenced in area, you know, as the, as the plan for the exercise for the dog, and that was, you know, very quickly discovered not going to be a viable option. And so, you know, I don't want to make it so difficult that people can't adopt dogs, you know, when they're being responsible owners, you know, sitting by a window, watching the dog outside, dogs chilling. That's, that's kind of where I'm, that's kind of where I'm stuck, and I have an amendment that addresses that question. I, this is a, you know, I know this is a, is a balance, and I certainly understand the position that you're in, but I think that there's a lot of responsible dog owners that are working in this, you know, in this framework without having to be outdoors with the dog at all times.
I think it's important to keep in mind that in Anarundale County, if Animal Care and Control is fully staffed, there's 10 officers for the entire county covering Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. So, that immediately would cut that in half, right? Because we can't all work 16-hour days. And then we also have Saturdays that we cover. Our two officers are handling animal attacks and bite reports, so that takes two more officers out. So, when you look at a shift, on any given shift, the most officers you have working the entire county is four. So, for those responsible pet owners, we're not getting the calls, and we're not able to get there before the situation is resolved. This is happening for these irresponsible owners that are walking that line and forcing the issue. These are the people that we go out and we say, "Hey, we have a problem. This is the law. Let's get this resolved." In fact, in one situation, we, actually in several situations, we've done things like provided dog houses that have been donated. We've done things to try and help make things better for both the citizens and the pets. But if you do something like remove the outdoors portion, our hands are tied then in terms of enforcement, because we cannot prove that someone is not watching.
Madam Chair, may I follow up, please?
Briefly, please. Thank you.
So, I mean, I certainly understand the enforcement concern. Obviously, that's a, that's a big concern, but, and I certainly appreciate the fact that you're not likely to go over, you know, you're not likely to be tracking down dog owners that are, you know, being responsible, watching their dog out the window. But that's not what the law says. I mean, the law doesn't say we make, you know, there's, it goes straight to, it goes straight to, I'm sorry, what's the word? I mean, basically taking the dog. So, that's my concern. I mean, that's, that's great that your policy would be to try and work with the dog owner if you felt that something unsafe was going on, but that's not what the, that's not what it says. That's not what the law says.
In terms of the impoundment, it's not a will impound, it's a may?
So, that, I mean, that still gives the discretion, and that means that the, you know, we certainly hope that all folks that are working with Animal Care and Control really, you know, I believe 100% with my heart that you, that you are going to, you know, work in the best interest of the dog, but I also worry that, you know, maybe down the road, someone, you know, someone who maybe didn't have that sense is still within the law to impound the dog under this, under this bill.
It's also if the, if the conditions are not met. So, if you are home, right, washing your dishes, and the animal's outside tethered, if this was in place, you'd be in violation, right? But if we show up and you take your animal inside, you've resolved the issue. You're not still in violation of the code.
But my understanding, though, this would give the, this would give Animal Care and Control the authority to impound the dog.
Karen, you want to help me on this one?
Karen Rehr from the Office of Law. Yes, under those conditions, Animal Care and Control, the officer could determine to impound the dog or could determine on sight that the violation is resolved or that the issue is resolved and the dog, and just essentially leave. That would be up to the officer on sight.
Thank you. Captain Adams, I just noticed you've had your light on for a while. Did you have something to add?
No, I haven't touched it at all.
Oh, okay. All right. Let's go to Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just add, if the police officers show up and there's somebody who is called and claimed an assault, and they talk to whoever's there, they didn't have to see it, they still charge it, you know? And so, I think that's what Councilwoman Rodvian is getting at, is that you could have someone from Animal Care and Control show up, even if you've taken the dog inside, based on the report, if they felt it was appropriate, it sounds like they could charge. But what I want to understand is this, when you get a complaint, even with the limited officers that you indicated you have, you all, I assume, do everything you possibly can to investigate every single complaint that comes in, right? Okay. When you go and investigate, you have to keep track of your investigations, your stats, your complaint numbers. How many times do you see that you all are going out there for this specific situation, dog tethered in yard, unsupervised, that you have an Animal Care and Control officer going out there, and they're looking at this exact incident, and they're ultimately walking away saying, "We couldn't charge anybody. We didn't have the, the evidence there to be able to do the charge." How often does that happen?
I can tell you, in one particular case, over 25 times in three months.
Was that one particular person that they kept going back to that house? So, that's the repeat offenders you were talking about. Beyond just the specific person and the number of times going there, how many people's houses are you going to in the county where this is happening? How many unique addresses?
Not very many. Since the legislation went into place, most people understood the definition as it was intended of supervision, and, and most law-abiding citizens recognize that.
Got it. So, I guess my follow-up question, if nobody else has questions, is would this be better served for us to come up with some kind of mechanism that says, "If Animal Care and Control comes to your house on three or more occasions, and they notice this issue, and they're there trying to cite you," you know, the third time that they come out for that, that's where this triggers in, that's where you can get charged, because they've been there enough times. I'm just wondering if that's a more appropriate way to have the escalator as opposed to an across-the-board rule, that then we're relying on the discretion of the Animal Care and Control officers to charge or not charge?
I would say the tough thing about that is that these situations can become dangerous the moment you leave, right? I mean, if even on a below-90-degree day, say it's 89 degrees, right, in this Maryland hot humidity, and we provide water for the animal, and we do our best to provide the animal... animal with some shade, if at all possible, if the animal immediately knocks over the water dish and the shade moves because we put it where it was at, at that moment, but the sun has changed a little bit, the animal starts cooking where, where it is. And we, with maybe having three officers for the whole county, if we're fully staffed, can't sit there and watch and wait for something to happen, we have to go to handle the other calls and the other investigations. And there's certainly been other jurisdictions where the county or the animal services agency has received a lot of public criticism for not taking action soon enough to save an animal.
Ms. Pickard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You've alluded a little bit to my question, so I'll be really brief. These instances that brought this bill before us have been complaint-driven by neighbors and concerned citizens. Otherwise, it's my understanding, from what all the testimony tonight, your officers aren't going checking backyards for tethered dogs.
No, our officers unfortunately don't have time to do that, though I'm sure they would like to.
Okay, thank you.
It looks like we do have others, yes? I'm not sure who was first. Sorry. Ms. Fiedler, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Considering that the Ring cameras have posed a new problem, was there any consideration in approaching this matter by drafting legislation that states electronic devices and apps are not considered being in line of sight or viewing the dog?
And that's one aspect of this, right? The other aspect for us, in the particular cases that have brought this to attention, is the evening hours, the long hours, that type of thing, where someone is home, especially with the pandemic, a lot more people have been working from home, or doing school from home, or that sort of thing, where people may be present, but not actually supervising the animal.
Ms. Rodgian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Rodgian, District 6. Following up on my colleague, Councilwoman Volkey's idea of, you know, having sort of a tiered, you know, step, like three strikes, you're out kind of rule, what if, with, along with something like that, there was allowance for immediate action if, you know, the officer made a determination that, like, the, the health or safety or something like that of the dog was, there was an immediate threat to the health and safety of the dog? Like, if the dog were, you know, in a position where clearly, I mean, you're saying enforcement is an issue, but if, you know, if officer comes, responds to a complaint, and finds the dog, you know, the tether is around the neck, obviously no one is supervising, allowing that kind of, like, immediate health and safety. But, you know, allowing the impoundment, I guess in that situation, to sort of allow a step, but also give the authority to, you know, to just make it clear within the law. I mean, it seems to me like that's probably the way you would handle it in, am I correct? That that might be, you know, you'd work with the person a couple times, but if it, you know, you still found the dog in immediate danger, then that would be a situation where it doesn't matter if you've ever gotten a call before, if the dog has, you know, got their leash around their neck or something, or, you know, hanging over a fence, immediately you would be able to impound the dog.
And so in, in my experience, I would say it would be nearly impossible to list out in the legislation all of the possible circumstances that you would say would then apply. I don't know if Office of Law would agree, but, you know, there, unfortunately, there are surprising things that happen, and even with years and years of experience, it may be impossible to come up with that list of what circumstances are then okay to say, okay, this meets this whole list, so now it's okay to impound.
I guess I'm not suggesting a list. I'm suggesting, like, under the officer's, you know, judgment, immediate safety and health is in jeopardy, or some, something like that, that would give the discretion in that situation, that would, you know, kind of narrow the discretion to the situations that are the ones we really want to address.
I think right now, the law already does that. If it's an immediate situation, it's these problems where we keep having it over and over again, that we really can't get the resolution that we're looking for. I mean, if it was exigent circumstances and the animal was looking like it needed to go to the vet immediately, otherwise it wouldn't survive, then we could argue exigent circumstances in court and take the animal to get vet care.
Okay. I think now's a good time to go ahead and have the public hearing, because we do actually have someone signed up, and hopefully she's here. So we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 6821. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received three submissions of online testimony on Bill 6821, shared with the council and added to the record.
All right. And we do have one person who signed up in advance, and I'm sorry if I get your last name wrong, Rebecca Benet.
Benet.
Benet. Please come down to the table and state your name and address for the record, and you'll have two minutes when you're ready.
Madam Chairwoman, council members, my name is Rebecca Benet, and I'm from 672 Cogcorps, Millersville, Maryland. Among other things, I'm a freelance journalist. And I was keeping track of social media, and I came across a discussion about some dogs that had been tethered 24/7 for three months. And the community was getting very riled up. Some people were suggesting breaking the law to help these animals. I thought maybe this would be a good story, I should find out more. So I went to the neighborhood, and I saw the dogs. It was 96 degrees. They had one inch of water in a metal container. They were tethered in a short tether, not 10, 10 feet like they're suggesting here. And I talked to the neighbors, and they were very tormented, tortured, even terrorized, having to watch these animals go through, you know, being in the heat every day after I saw that, those dogs. I was in my home, I wasn't even looking at them like the neighbors were, and I couldn't get it out of my mind that, you know, this is going on. To address something, someone said, you know, standing in your kitchen, even washing your dishes, in an air-conditioned house, even if you can see the dog, you're not feeling the heat that, at least those dogs were experiencing on that day. But what I wanted to talk to the council about is, please keep in mind, we have to do something to improve, you know, the lives of the animals, definitely, for our own ethics and our own well-being. But the people are suffering. The, you know, one man was talking about how he had to leave the neighborhood. Remember, it was three months that they were watching this. He couldn't even keep renting the apartment, he had to get out of there, somebody was falling off the wagon. An older woman was talking about, you know, she could see rats in the yard. So please, consider, it's not just the animals, it's the people that have to witness this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Benet. Would anyone else like to speak?
Yes.
Sir, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Bobby Candari. I live in 207 Scots Manor Drive, Glenburne. I have an office at 4408 Ritchie Highway, and I have witnessed this cruelty in front of my eyes for three months. I had to go through depression, I am still under medications, and I have seen what an animal can go through when they are tethered, and why dogs should be tethered, by the way. They should not be tethered. They are our companions. They are our support. They are the best friends of human beings. Why should they be tethered? I have a question to ask everybody. If you tether them, yes, it should be supervised, you should be seeing the dog. If you, if you're tethering the dog, that means you don't know, you don't love that animal, you don't need that animal. That's what I'm going to say. It's very emotionally distressful, the kids have seen this, the drama, and, and you know what? The complaints usually comes from the people who are concerned about excessive tethering. A 15-minute tethering, a 30-minute tethering, nobody calls the animal control, nobody has time. That's pretty okay. But when the dog is tethered for hours, days, nights, that's where people abuse that law. And we should have a very clear-cut law where there is no gray area left, and animal control can enforce the law. They should not have that way to get around, oh, I'm seeing from my window. Yes, you can see from the window, how can you prove? Animal control cannot prove, they cannot enforce their own laws, they are bound by the law. And the dog, and the animal control cannot even go on the other side of the fence, because she has a no trespassing sign. Now, you cannot even save the animal. We have seen this 25 times, animal control was there, and they cannot open the fence. This is how that woman treated the law. She abused the animal control officers, she abused the county officials, right on their face. That's the mockery of the law. She made a fun of the law. We should have laws where people abide by the laws. These laws are for people who disobey the law, not the people who... When people tether their dogs and they don't get called to the animal control, that means there's a limited tethering, hour, two hours. It's, it's okay. I mean, hour, two-hour tethering is fine. When dogs are let for 24 hours, in rain, 90 degrees, 28 degrees, that's cruel.
Thank you, Mr. Candari. Thank you for coming to speak. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak at this time? Seeing none, the public hearing on Bill Number 6821 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6821.
Bill Number 6821, An Ordnance Concerning Public Safety, Animal Care and Control, Authority to Impound Tethering of Dogs.
Is there any further discussion from the council at this time?
Madam Chair, would this be appropriate time to introduce an amendment?
It would. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This amendment removes the requirement that the person needs to be outdoors while a dog is tethered outside.
Ms. Rodgian, you may make a brief statement in support of your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Rodgian, District 6. So this is really just trying to find a way to not entangle responsible dog owners in this bill. I am very open to discussion, I am not married to this particular amendment, but I would like to find a way to ensure that the law addresses the people that are to, the two members of the public who just testified. I would like to make sure that those people are covered by the law, but not folks that are actually genuinely supervising their, their animals from, from inside. I thought this would be a good balance, but I'm open to further discussion, and that's, that's my purpose here. The person would still be required to be on the property. I would, in my opinion, and we could clarify it more, you know, to a greater degree, that a Ring or whatever, those kinds of cameras, would not qualify as a direct line of sight, so the person would have to be on the property. I understand the enforcement issue, so I'm just, this is as much as anything for discussion, and to try and strike a better balance, so we can capture the, the, you know, the, the bad players, and, but leave the ones that are doing right by their dogs.
Thank you, Ms. Rodgian. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
And is there a second?
Here, a second.
Thank you. Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The administration cannot support this amendment. I think you've heard from Ms. Catlett quite eloquently, the issues around enforcement. The administration is comfortable with the bill as is, that it would be only catching those who are truly abusing their animals. If the council feels that this bill still needs a little work, since we did not have a work session in, whatever the last month was, August, that maybe the more appropriate thing would be to hold the bill and let us have some discussions to provide what Animal Care and Control needs, and balancing the concerns that were just raised by a couple of questions from council members. That would be the administration's preferred option.
Any comments from anybody else? I'm trying to be fair by looking to both sides first. Okay. Madam Chair. Ms. Fiedler, and then I'll work down.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair, Amanda Fiedler. So I, I do appreciate what, what your amendment is attempting to do. I do have concerns after hearing from Ms. Catlett, and being a dog owner, I certainly do think that there are owners who are tethering for companionship, but perhaps they cannot hold a leash, or the dog is too large to be on a leash, a belt leash. So I don't want to, I don't want to leave some of our, some of the more offensive tethering where there is no one outside. So unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to support this amendment this evening, but I do hear from across the dais that there is an interest from this council to fix the problem that you're dealing with. And I, however, the vote happens this evening, I, I think there'll be interest in pursuing if we don't, or if we vote and the bill fails this evening. I think that there is unanimous interest in helping out.
Thank you. It is much appreciated. Ms. Rodgian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would actually like to withdraw my motion, or my amendment, if that would be allowed and replace it with a motion to hold the bill to have further discussion, so we can work to, you know, find a balance.
Okay, hang on. So in order to withdraw this amendment, Ms. Hare, who was the second, has to agree.
I'll withdraw my second.
Okay. Amendment Number One is withdrawn. And while you could make the motion, before you do that, does anyone else have any discussion on the bill? I know I have some things I'd like to say, but perhaps others would like to go first. Okay. Well, it's just me, apparently. I prefer to pass the bill as it is tonight. I think it's good enough, and if it's too strict, we can come back and amend it down. I actually think the more serious problem is a lack of enforcement by our state's attorney's office, because there's no way that there's not some crime that could be charged for somebody who has tethered their dog outside such that 25 times, animal control had to respond. And if there's a failure of enforcement, that doesn't mean that this law would catch anybody who was even questionably violating it. It just makes it extra clear that we're deadly serious about wanting to see appropriate consequences for people who are cruel to their animals, such as happened in this case. Because people who are cruel to animals are cruel to people, too. And we know that those people may go on and do other harms, whether they're criminal or not. I'm perfectly happy to pass this tonight, I don't think we should wait. Does anyone else have anything to say? I'm not hearing a motion. There isn't currently a motion on the table. Ms. Rodgian?
I would like to move to hold the bill.
Until when?
The September 20th.
Second.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to hold the vote on Bill Number 6821 until September 20th, 2021.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodgian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative. The motion to hold the vote on Bill 6821 until September 20th has been adopted.
All right. Bill Number 6821 will be voted on, or held until, for voting on, September 20th, 2021. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6921.
Bill Number 6921, An Ordnance Concerning Current Expense Budget, Capital Budget and Program, Supplementary Appropriations and Fund Transfer.
Mr. Barron, I'm sure you're ready to hand it off to Mr. Trumbauer, which I already did for you, so you don't have to say anything.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Maybe I will just introduce the, the great folks joining me, and we have some folks in the audience, if they're needed, but we have Ms. Lays, oh, Ms. Matthews has made her way up from Ricken Parks, Mr. Braun, Ms. O'Connell from DPW, and Ms. Lori Blair-Klausmeyer from the Office of Law, and then, of course, your budget officer and mine, Mr. Chris Trumbauer. So with that, Mr. Trumbauer, would you like to take the bill?
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Thank you, Madam Chair. Chris Trumbauer, County Budget Officer. Before I talk a little bit about the bill, first, let me say, I think the auditor's blue letter is an excellent summary, so that should, that should be your cheat sheet on this. But a little bit of history, this bill does two different things. The first is, it accommodates a late-breaking cost increase in the Beverly Triton Nature Park project. Normally, we would prefer to deal with this in the budget, because of various timing issues, didn't come to the administration's attention until literally about a day or two before we struck the budget. we struck the budget. We had already reconciled all the numbers with Madam Auditor, and we were trying to investigate whether there were some other ways to deal with this. So it did not make it in time for budget, which is why the bill is in front of you today. And if you have detailed questions about that, we have, I think, Mr. Braun here or Ms. Matthews that can answer that. The second part of the bill is just a funding swap because, as council will remember, in FY22 budget, we had $9 million of state funding through their capital budget to go to Reckon Parks projects. We produced an initial list of a bunch of great projects and passed that in the budget, and then Reckon Parks had been working with DNR to get their sign off. They had some questions about a couple of the projects, and so rather than go through a bunch of hoops with them, all parties agreed it would be easier to just do a funding swap with some of the unappropriated pay-go fund balance from the budget. So that's the second part of the bill, which simply moves $500,000 from Eisenhower Golf Course, $800,000 from Jug Bay into the Beverly Triton Nature Park since we were bringing a bill before you to deal with that project. Anyway, we thought that would be a good landing spot for this. And then I'll just close that we did... Because this is an addition to the capital budget, we did have to bring this through PAB. They voted in August to approve this, and so it now stands before you. The administration would ask for your support, and detailed questions, I have this distinguished panel of experts on either side of me.
Thank you, Mr. Trumbauer. Does anyone have a question? Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. Thank you, Mr. Trumbauer. Since you mentioned the procedure, I'm hoping you can help walk me through because this project, obviously, it's already in the budget, so it's partially funded, which puts us in a very awkward situation of having to decide whether we finish funding it or not finish funding it and what that might mean for the project, whether it means a whole piece of it never gets done, whether it then has to get done over two years and the park is closed for two years. I mean, there's a whole series of ramifications that we have to deal with, and I struggle with the concept that, you know, okay, we missed it by a couple of days, so it just couldn't happen for the budget. So help me understand when the estimate was put together by the administration, when the bids came in, and what happened in between the time that the bids came in and the budget was struck such that it never made it into the supplemental?
Sure. Thank you. Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer. Great questions, and, I mean, you really did sum it up. It was a timing thing, and for the specific dates of everything that happened, I'll turn it over to Mr. Braun at DPW. But essentially, the bids came in right as we were striking the budget. They were higher than we expected, and we did not have time to deal with that in FY22 capital budget, like you guys are familiar with. You know, oftentimes, there's cost changes. Sometimes they go up, sometimes they go down. We true it up in the supplemental. That happens all the time. This one was unusual because of the timing of when the bids came in in relations to when the budget was being finalized. But the specific dates and information, I think I'll defer to Mr. Braun from DPW.
Good evening. David Braun with the Department of Public Works Bureau of Engineering. To track through, I think, what you are asking, the original or the engineer's estimates that we've been dealing with through here was prepared when we were starting the CIP preparations for FY22, so it was in October. We had... We were working towards bidding the project at that point, but for a variety of reasons, usually around permits and getting everything ready to advertise, that got delayed. Bids were received on June 1st. Once we got those bids, we spent the next couple of days trying to figure out what our options were. So it was... I don't remember when the end of the weeks were in there. I think the bids were probably in on a Tuesday. It was by the end of that week or the first of the following week where we were discussing with the administration as to how we could move forward best with that. And because of the timing and where we were with dealing with the agreements with the auditors on all of our projects at that point, it was a decision made that we wouldn't pursue it with the budget request.
Madam Chair, may I ask a follow-up?
Go ahead.
Who made that decision not to pursue it?
Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer. Who made the decision not to pursue it in the budget?
Yeah.
That was my decision because I got informed on Friday, and you guys were striking the budget on Monday. We were literally in the weeds of reconciling the entire budget with the auditor's office and with the council, and I think all parties agreed that they would continue to pursue other options to see if there was another way. The reason that the other ways didn't work out is because my understanding, and we have Ms. Matthews here from Reckon Parks, is to keep the project on schedule, which I think all parties want to do. There was no real way with the bids that we received to break off parts of the scope and still have the project realized in the timeframe necessary of having the bids. And we didn't want the bids to expire because then we'd have to go out and rebid it, and if you guys have been following the news, material and labor costs ain't getting any cheaper. So we wanted to keep the bids intact and find a way to deal with this at that point. So if you're looking to some... For someone to blame, I will take that burden if that's what you're looking for.
I'm trying to figure out how do we stop this from happening in a subsequent year? I can understand if it's a one-off, mistakes happen, but, you know, if the bids were received on June 1 and we struck the budget two weeks later, who set the bid for June 1? I mean, is it just that we need to not have bids come in on June 1? They all need to come in, you know, May 15 or earlier, and we don't set bids for the time? I mean, what is it that we can do to set the procedure? Maybe if, you know, the engineer's estimate was done in October 2020, do we update those, you know, every March before budget starts to go in the works? What is it that we can do to fix the process? Because I'm more concerned with making sure that this is not a repeat issue every year.
And thank you, Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer. I completely support and understand that sentiment and share it, and I think the administration has had conversations with Director Chris Phipps and others about improving the internal communication, and we had some of the same questions from the PAB when we were in front of them. But it really was... I mean, I don't want to call it a completely unique event, but it was an unusual event because a bunch of things happened at once that culminated in this not being ready at the appropriate time. But we are... I can assure you, we are pursuing ways to make sure that this does not repeat itself. But if any of my colleagues want to add anything, I'll defer to them.
David Braun, Public Works. I don't really have anything to add. I think there are steps that can be taken, as Mr. Trumbauer outlined, that can ensure that it doesn't happen again like that, even if this was a one-off.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Did anybody on the panel attend the PAB meeting where they deliberated and voted on this?
Yes.
I did as well.
Okay. It was a four-to-three vote. Do you all know what the opposition was? Why did the three folks who voted against it? What was their rationale? What was the argument they were making?
David Braun with the Department of Public Works. The impression and feeling from their questions was that they felt instead of asking for more money, we should go and negotiate with a little bidder. And under our purchasing regulations, we're not allowed to do that.
Did you have another question?
I did, but I'll...
No, there's a reflection of the light on these things, so it's confusing.
Told you.
You go ahead, and then I'll go back to Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So you had indicated that the cost was $1.165 million more than what the engineers had estimated. I heard Mr. Trumbauer talking about material and labor costs and how they had increased. I've, you know, anecdotally followed kind of the lumber market, at least. I don't follow the steel market and some of the other materials markets, but it looks like those prices have sort of come back down to a little higher than where they were pre-pandemic, but they're not sort of outrageous like they were where you saw... I'll give you an example. Two-by-fours were going for like $7 a board, which was crazy. I mean, it was two and a half times what they were pre-pandemic. What is it that is the key driver of those material prices that's now caused you all to find that the estimate was so far off or the bid was so far off of the estimate?
I don't know that I can say there's one key. In reviewing it, the... There is an overall, probably, I think they were... The discussions led to about a 15% to 20% increase in the material cost in the bid versus what the engineers had estimated. In addition, there were some... The way the project was bid, it's difficult to just pinpoint everything, but there were a couple items that were significantly even more than 20% higher than anticipated, and I think some of that is or was depend... Concerns that the contractors may have and others of unknown situations regarding soil work and hauling costs and dumping costs of the soil that has to leave the site seem to be a big factor in it.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. What happens if this is not funded? I mean, is it... I can think of a couple scenarios, but help me understand what happens if it's not funded.
Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer. So we... I mean, essentially, we would either have to decide to not do the bids and rebid the project, or we would somehow have to significantly reduce the scope of the project. And the reason that the administration is not keen to do that, quite frankly, is that this project has been planned and conceived for a while, as you know, as the representative for the district. I believe it's a project that has support from both the water access community and from the local Mayo community, and we want to keep the project on track. We don't want to delay it. It's been in the budget for a while, and that's why we're taking the unusual and rather extraordinary step to bring this before you. I mean, as I said before, this is rare. I can tell you during my time on the council, I don't remember, you know, a bill coming forward that was similar to this. DPW has pretty robust procedures in place to ensure that bids do come in within the range. So again, this is just an unusual setup of several circumstances colliding to make an unfortunate scenario.
Do I understand correctly that if you had to go rebid it, essentially, you would lose this season and it would end up the whole project would get pushed a year? Is that accurate?
Yes. The intent of the schedule was to get under construction this fall, early winter, so that it was only next season that would be impacted. Either reducing the scope and trying to construct more of it at a future point or rebidding it would most likely spread that out. Well, certainly wouldn't get done next year, and it could spread it out over two seasons.
Okay. Last question, unless you have more, unless somebody else?
Let's go to the public hearing, and I'll come back.
Sure.
We'll now open the public hearing on Bill Number 6921. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair. We did receive one submission of testimony online that was shared with the entire council and has been added to the record.
Thank you. I believe we do not have anyone sign up in advance, so if anyone is here who would like to speak on Bill 6921, please stand up now, come down to the table. When it is your turn, please state your name and address for the record. Your remarks will be limited to two minutes. Madam Secretary, are you keeping time? Okay. Let's go from ladies first to... However you want to do it. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Aerosmith. I'm the chair of the Water Access Committee, and I'm really happy to be in front of this council again in person. And I appreciate the honor of speaking in support of this bill. This project has been 37 years in the making, and this is the council's opportunity to make history in a very good way that will endure beyond all of us for the county. December 2018 seems like a very long time ago to me, and I'm sure it seems like a longer time to you because you've been on the hot seat during the pandemic. And you've heard me speak about this park before, and what I want to talk about is what the county parks where I grew up in Iowa meant to me. Our local park, Pennacon Ridge Park, was part of my... Basically, part of the family. You know, we canoe there, we'd camp. My father thought we spent too much time indoors, and he would roust us at 6 o'clock on Saturday or Sunday morning and say, "We're going to go to the park and have breakfast." And the next thing you know, there's some dozy teenagers going, "Where are we?" You know, making bacon and eggs and then going for a hike. We camped. Every time we camped, it rained enough to canoe through the playground. There was a field of deer that we could watch for some reason, like there wasn't deer in every ditch in Iowa, but when you're a kid. And, you know, it was a part of the family. And this bill finally building out the basic amenities for families to enjoy Beverly Triton in safety and comfort, you know, this park will be a part of many, many families in the future, you know, for the entire county, for the entire state. And I ask you to make this historic accomplishment and approve the final funding for this decades-long process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Aerosmith. All right, gentlemen. I didn't see rock, paper, scissors.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of council. Walter Reeder, Edgewater Lane, Severna Park. I first discovered this park in my travels on a bicycle because I noticed fencing, no parking signs, and said, "Oh, what's behind this?" And then I discovered that it was county land. Also, in those journeys, I found a beach just north of there, and I... At that time, you could get a permit, and you could get a code, and you could get in there. And I asked the county employees about the history of the park, and they said, "Well, back when it was private, the public could use it, but now that the county owns it, you have to come in here and get permission." And I thought that was odd. However, that's been... And this, to fully fund this, is an opportunity to rectify this. In my time in working with the Water Access Committee, I've lived in three locations in Anaron County, one backed up to Kinder Park. It is a phenomenal resource for the people that live there, and yes, there was concerns when it was first opened up from the neighbors. I know the county can do a great job with this. It did a great job with Kinder. It's going to do a great job here, but we need the funding to make it, to allow it, to become a great job, and the people in the neighborhood will realize that the county can do an excellent job, and this can be a wonderful resource. So I implore you, let it happen, fund it, and move forward with this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reeder. Mr. Lofton?
Good evening. Once again, I'm Mike Lofton. I still live on Polling House Road in Harwood, and I'm here to urge your support for 6921. Thirty-seven years ago, almost two generations, your predecessors on this council responded to the pleas of Mayo Peninsula residents to buy 340 acres of waterfront land targeted for development. 2,200 residences were planned on this site and hundreds of thousands of square feet of commercial space. Their request was to make it a public park. The record's clear. Read the written testimony of resident community associations. Read the newspaper accounts of statements by the then-county executive and local council member. Precious public recreation funds were committed to protect Mayo from unwanted development, and in return, a waterfront park would be established. Sounds like a wonderful plan, and it was. The county government failed to keep its promise. Decades have passed. Young parents with children have grown old. Children have turned into adults denied safe, convenient access to the public waterways. Not one, but two master plans were created. Tonight, you have the opportunity to right a wrong. This project before you is for minimal health and public safety facilities. Public funds are being spent all over this county for private beaches. This is for the public. The need for public water access is well documented. The project is not nearly enough. Every weekend, we turn hundreds of families away from our scarce public beaches. If you haven't had a chance to see that, you ought to go stand at one of these interests and look at the children in the backseat that are being turned away. You need to approve this, and you need to ask this administration, what's the plan for resolving this gross inadequacy of access to the water? Please do that. And if you didn't get a chance to see the morning paper, that's what a happy child going to the water looks like. I hope some of you have seen this. I'll pass it with my paper. I'll give it to you, and I'll leave you a copy of my statement. Please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lofton, and thank you for purchasing the local paper.
So am I.
That's right. Would anybody else like to speak on Bill 6921? If so, move forward. Seeing none. Okay. The public hearing on Bill Number 6921 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6921.
Bill Number 6921: An Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget, Capital Budget and Program: Supplementary Appropriations and Fund Transfer.
Thank you. And any remaining discussion? Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This might be a question from...
This might be a question for Mr. Braun, but in the bids that were returned, well, let me back up the step before that. When you solicited bids, I am going back in my mind to Bill 5619, which removed the prohibition on project labor agreements. Did the purchasing or the bids that you put out, sort of the RFPs, saying, "Here's what we want," did any of that include people who were putting in PLAs? Like, in any of your bids, was that part of the driver of the cost? If you don't understand the question, you can ask me.
I didn't catch the first part.
Sure, no problem. So I'm going back to, two years ago, we had a bill in front of us, Bill 5619. There previously was a prohibition in the county code that said you could not use project labor agreements in county projects. That was removed. So does this project have PLA money in it?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. Then moving to the next question that I have about this specific bill. So looking at it, it does two things, right? People are saying, "We need to fund this." That's the 1.165 in unappropriated fund balance. I get that, that's easy. But it's mixed in there with a second piece of the bill, which changes funding sources, and it moves money from geo bonds to state grants, and state grants to geo bonds. And I'm not truly, I'm not sure I entirely understand why. I heard Mr. Trumbauer allude to there were some requirements, and they talked to stakeholders, and the state agreed it might be easier. Maybe if I can get a little more clarification on why you're shifting the fund sources in terms of this. Like, I get the additional 1.16, and you needed it in the bids, and we frankly had something like this happen at Downs Park in my district with the same concerns that Mr. Braun mentioned about soil removal being close to the water, et cetera. So I'm cognizant of that, but I want to understand that second piece.
Sure. Chris Tremmer, Budget Officer. So the funding swap component, council member, it's a net zero proposition, right? So we're moving the state grants from two projects into one, and then we're supplanting that with the geo bonds. So there's no net difference there. And the reasoning is because when we submitted and passed the budget, we had the state grant funding attached to those, to a number of different projects. But two of them, the Eisenhower Golf Course and the Jug Bay Education Center, they were on our initial list. When Rakin Park submitted that to DNR to work through their side of that process, they had some questions about two of those because, as a lot of state bills, there were some fine prints, and they wanted to know how it met this, that, and the other. So we convened a meeting, and my understanding is, Rakin Park staff spoke with Department of Natural Resources, and they said, "Look, you know, we can, you can respond to our questions, and then we can re-review and do all that, or you can just swap funding to something else that would be eligible." That was presented to the administration. We thought that was a simpler solution because we wanted to do this quickly, and we thought a continued back and forth with the state may ended up getting prolonged. So that's why we decided to do this. And as I mentioned before, that was at the same time where we were realizing we had to bring an appropriation bill before you with this project already, so it was a natural vehicle to do two things at once.
Thank you.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jessica Hare, District 7. Mr. Braun, you mentioned that there were some things you were looking at to make sure this doesn't happen in the future. Can you share some of those thoughts with us?
David Braun, Department of Public Works. I believe that what Mr. Trumbauer had laid out were kind of some of the options we were looking at, you know, limiting when bids might be received during the budget process, making sure estimates were received close to the bids, and making sure that those get updated through the budget process, if possible, instead of just only coming up with one estimate in November, when it, our first submission is due, and then running with that number.
Okay. Last question. If, Mr. Trumbauer, you mentioned that potentially you could throw out the bids and rebid it, and that would lose you a season. The other option is a piece of the project does not happen. What item out of the scope of work would not happen if this is not funded?
Chris Tremmer, Budget Officer. So the reason this is before you, this bill is before you now in its current posture is because we couldn't answer that question. There was no simple component where we could say, "Oh, you know, we're not going to put this restroom in," or, you know, "We just won't do this part." That was something that was explored, and that's why it wasn't an immediate decision to say, "Oh, you know, let's go this route." We did look to see, my understanding is, staff at Department of Rakin Parks and DPW spent some time looking at that, and then ultimately concluded, there was no, there was no component that they could simply snip off to keep this on target, but rather, we wanted to keep the whole project intact, and that's why we chose this route. So I don't have a clean answer for you because we couldn't, we couldn't get that clean answer ourselves.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions? You can wrap up, Ms. Hare.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to support the bill. I think it's, we're in a tricky situation where, like I said, it's been kind of partially funded, and it would be very awkward to either try and have to rip out a piece of the scope or delay the project, which has been partially funded. As the fiscal authority, I do take very seriously that we want to make sure this situation doesn't happen in the future. So I'm very heartened to hear that maybe moving forward, the independent engineers' estimates will get updated closer to the budget, and we'll adjust the timing for bids. That makes me feel better. I do think the project at this point has been a long time in the making. Candidly, my family and I enjoy going for walks in Beverly Triton. We do rainbow walks where my kids have to pick out something from every color of the rainbow while we're hiking. So it, I mean, it's a beautiful place to go, but I do, I do thank you for answering all my questions. I would ask my colleagues to support this.
Thank you. And then, if I may, Madam Chair, just to respond, I mean, frankly, nobody's happy about this, and we're all committed to making sure that there are some internal improvements and procedure enhancements that do truly make this unique, and so we're all trying to move past it. But thank you. Thank you for your support.
Well, if I may offer, Mr. Trumbauer, we have a wonderful auditor sitting right in front of you, whose team is probably ready to help with your process and programmatic audits. Anyone else have a final comment? No? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 6921.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 6921 is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 7021.
Bill Number 7021, An Ordnance Concerning Snug Harbor Waterways Improvement District Modification.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hopefully, this one's a lot easier. Sticking with me is our Budget Officer, Mr. Trumbauer, and from Office of Law, Ms. Lori Blair Klausmeyer. Bill 70-21 modifies the boundaries of the Snug Harbor Waterway Improvement District by removing a property at 1705 Snug Harbor and adding a property at 4914 Whipple Way. The Waterway Improvement District's membership is based on the right to utilize an assigned boat slip for a community marina. The property owner at 1705 Snug Harbor no longer wishes to utilize the boat slip, and therefore, it's being reassigned to the owner of the Whipple Way property. The change in boundaries of the Waterway Improvement District requires at least 75% of the existing properties to sign a petition in support of the change, and 80% voted in favor of the change. We ask that you pass this bill this evening. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the council before I open the public hearing? Seeing none? Okay. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 7021. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair, we did not receive any submissions online.
All right, we do have one person signed up to speak, Andrew Mahoney. I'm sorry, O. Mahoney. Andrew O. Mahoney. I do not see anyone standing up to come down. And would anybody else?
Madam Chair, Mr., sorry, Chris Tremmer, Budget Officer. Mr. O. Mahoney is the representative from a community association, so I think, I presume he was testifying in support, but doesn't seem to have stuck around this late.
No problem. That does happen. And I think no one else wants to speak on the bill, therefore, I will close the public hearing on Bill Number 7021. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 7021.
Bill Number 7021, An Ordnance Concerning Snug Harbor Waterways Improvement District Modification.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 7021.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 7021 is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 7121.
Bill Number 7121, An Ordnance Concerning Licenses and Registration, Swimming Pools, Pool Operator, and Lifeguard Licenses.
This is Ms. Fiedler's bill. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. So this bill, and the need for this bill, came to me from a constituent who manages many private pools across the county. She shared with me that currently lifeguards pay about $300 each year to get certified, which is required in order to have a job as a lifeguard. But then they pay an additional $20 for a license that they are certified, which then has to go through the licensing process within the Health Department. That is the first area that this bill addresses. The second area is that the annual pool operator's license is $20 annually. Currently, this bill would change it to $60 every three years. And just to compare, Prince George's, Baltimore Carroll, and Howard Counties do not charge for lifeguard licenses, and they have the pool operator licenses renewed every three years. So we're kind of an outlier in that regard. So this is just an effort to help the lifeguards and those public, I'm sorry, private pools who feel the undue burden is put upon them each swim season.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me from our Department of Health is Mr. Curtian, and from our Office of Law, sticking with us is Ms. Lori Blair Klausmeyer. Want to thank the sponsor for working with the administration. There's been some back and forth over language, both in advance of the bill and at the appropriate time. The administration will be requesting an amendment that we hope is viewed as friendly. We support the general concept of the bill and hope that our amendment is, continues to accomplish the goal of the sponsor, and we think it does. Hopefully, everybody agrees.
Thank you. Do we have any comments from the council or questions? Mr. Volkey, your flag is down. Okay. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 7121. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair, we did not receive anything.
All right. And it appears to me we do not have anybody who signed up to speak. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this bill? You know the drill, nobody's moving. We will now close the public hearing on Bill Number 7121. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 7121.
Bill Number 7121, An Ordnance Concerning Licenses and Registration, Swimming Pools, Pool Operator, and Lifeguard Licenses.
All right. And seeing no further discussion, we do have one amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This amendment changes the term of a pool license from three years to one year and makes the term of a pool operator license concurrent with the term of the pool operator's training.
Thank you. Mr. Barron, you may make a brief statement on this amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I mentioned in our opening comments, the administration raised a couple of concerns a little bit at the late hour, and appreciate the council's flexibility. And the idea was to have the amendment mirror the three-year terms of the pool, or, excuse me, have the bill, the amendment should fix the bill so that the bill mirrors the three-year terms of the pool operator's license with their required training. This would further streamline the process for pool operators and hopefully reduce the regulatory burden. Mr. Curtian suggested and spotted the change. If there's anything you'd like to add, sir, feel free. No, we definitely support, we definitely support the amendment and the bill, and thank Ms. Fiedler for bringing it, you know, forward.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. All right, who seconded? Pickard, okay, for the record, that's all. All right. Is there any discussion on the amendment?
Madam Chair.
Gosh, I must be getting tired. Who is calling me? Okay, there you are.
The reflection.
Plus the barriers. I actually can't hear you all as well as I used to, so, sorry.
Understood, no problem. And I do appreciate the amendment. It turns out that the original language, while we thought it was okay, it did capture a broader licensing pool than we intended, so I'm fine with this amendment, and thank you for working with me.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One is adopted.
Thank you. Bill Number 7121, as amended, will be heard on September 20th, 2021. Everybody better eat a good dinner that night, we've got an increasingly long agenda. All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 3621.
Resolution Number 3621, Resolution in Support of the County Executive of Anarundel County Promptly Entering Into an Agreement with Robert A. Pascal Youth and Family Services, Inc., to Lease and Make Fully Available County-Owned Property Located at 41 Community Place in Crownsville, Maryland.
As a reminder, the public hearing on Resolution Number 3621 was concluded on July 19th. Ms. Fiedler, this is your resolution, so you have the floor.
Yes, Madam Chair, this is my resolution, and I think it's pretty explanatory and lengthy. And I would like to make a motion this evening to hold this resolution until our meeting on September 20th, as indicated earlier in the meeting. Today is a holiday for the Jewish faith community, and one of the active participants in this resolution is not able to be present this evening because he is observing his holiday.
Is there a second?
Radvian, second, and La Shana Tova.
Thank you. And we're holding until, your motion is to hold until September 20th, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to hold, further hold this, the vote on Resolution Number 3621 until September 20th, 2021.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to continue to hold the vote on Resolution 3621 is adopted.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 4221.
Resolution Number 4221, Resolution Nominating a Member to Serve on the Anarundel County Ethics Commission.
All right. I have that, I think, Ms. Fiedler and Mr. Volkey and Mr. Pruski are cosponsors on the resolution? I forget who's first. Ms. Fiedler, you go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just to confirm, we are on Resolution 4221, correct?
I hope that's what I said. It's what I meant.
Okay, yes. So this is a very clear resolution, appointing Ms. Corinne M. Fitzgerald to the County Ethics Commission. Mr. Emerson C. Davis, his appointment expired. There is a resume included in your packet for Ms. Fitzgerald.
Is there any discussion? I'm sure we all thank the folks who are volunteering to serve on the Ethics Commission. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 4221.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Point of privilege, if I may. I did go to high school with Ms. Fitzgerald, so I know her.
I did go to high school with Ms. Fitzgerald, so I know her. However, I haven't talked to her in many, many years. That being said, I think that I can vote impartially on this. I wanted to put that on the record. Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Lacey?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 4221 is adopted.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 4321.
Resolution Number 4321, Resolution Appointing Members of the Salary Standard Commission.
All right. I think many of us are cosponsoring this at this point. I don't know whether it's the entire council. I'm sure we all would, once again, thank everyone who is volunteering to serve on the Salary Standard Commission. Does anyone have any comments?
Point of information, Madam Chair.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you. Madam Secretary, who's the, who hasn't sponsored?
Ms. Lacey as Chair is the main sponsor, and then individually, we have added you, Mr. Volkey.
Okay, good.
Mr. Pruski, also Ms. Fiedler, Ms. Hare, and Ms. Pickard.
Madam Chair, may I be added as a sponsor, please? I think.
You certainly may.
Thank you.
And Madam Secretary, you could add me as well, so that it says the entire council. That would be great.
So noted.
All right. Mr. Pruski?
Thank you, Madam Chair.